Well, it's five thirty. I guess we can get started. And hello and welcome to the September third, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Manitou Springs Historic Preservation Commission. The purpose of the Historic Preservation Commission is to protect and enhance districts of historic significance and instill and foster civic pride in the legacy and achievements of the past. And to improve the economic vitality of the historic areas of the community through encouraging compatible rehabilitation of historic structures. The Historic Preservation Commission is responsible for reviewing plans for building in the historic districts for architectural appropriateness and to ensure proposals meet the city's design guidelines, which are based on the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So we're going to start tonight by taking role and introducing the commissioners. Joy?
Hello, this is Joy Porter, Commissioner.
Matt Murphy, Commissioner.
Matt Rose, Vice Chair.
Ann Nichols, Commissioner. And I'm Laura Kinseth, Chair. So, we can start with approval of the minutes. We have two months here. The HPC minutes from May seventh.
And I won't be voting on this since I wasn't there.
I was absent from that meeting too.
Anyone else have any comments?
Oh, they look fine to me. I'd move approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Minutes of May seventh are approved. Um, what was that? Three? Um, okay, minutes from August sixth. Does anyone have any comments or corrections?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from May sixth. Is that right?
That is correct.
Is that right?
No, I think it's August.
Thanks, everybody.
July.
Second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, minutes for August sixth are approved, five zero. Next on the agenda, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, um, any notice of council action?
Fred was going to join a little, oh, sorry, no, notice of council action. Yes. We have, sorry, I got ahead of myself a little bit. Um, the Hiawatha Gardens project was brought back to City Council uh, for an update on August twelfth and uh, was directed to uh, proceed. So, we are um, in the process of reviewing entitlements, uh, so the rezoning, subdivision and street vacation and are expecting the major development plans, middle package later this week, I believe.
Thank you. Um, any unfinished business? Okay, we can move on to new business. The order of proceedings for tonight's public hearing items is, first of all, there will be staff presentation for each application. Then the commissioners um, may ask questions of staff. Then we have the applicant's statement. And again, commissioners can ask questions. Then we will open it up to public comment, which will include statements in favor or statements against um, the project. And also applicant rebuttal is included in that part. Then we will close the public comment. Commissioners will have another discussion and a motion to approve or not each application, uh, more discussion and the vote. So, do any of the commissioners have any ex parte um, conversations or conflicts of interest for any of these? Okay. All right. I guess we can get started with MCAC two five oh seven, seven twenty Manitou Avenue.
Thank you, Chair Kinseth. Uh, this is Chelsea Royston for the record. And I'd also like to take a moment to um, ask if the person attending virtually Erin is Erin Handlin, Commissioner. Uh, we've attempted to promote that party and so Zach's gonna attempt to do that again and, and hopefully she can hear us and she can join. So, uh, I will move into this presentation and we'll keep you updated on that, but. Uh, MCAC twenty five oh seven or um, exterior alterations at seven twenty Manitou Avenue. Uh, the owner is seeking an MCAC to replace exterior siding and reconstruct an exterior stair staircase. It is in the downtown zone district and the commercial core historic sub-district. Goodness, I don't know why this is buffering.
Yeah.
Um, this is a continuation of work completed under MCAC twenty-two oh nine, which was issued in twenty twenty-two. Uh, it is for siding on the north facade, which is currently wood horizontal lap siding with approximately six inch reveals. And uh, siding on the west facade, which is currently vertical wood siding with approximately ten inch reveals. Both of those are to be replaced with cement fiber hor- horizontal lap siding with four inch reveals. With the exception of the uh, stone foundation on the north facade, which is at the creek level. Um, that is going to remain as is. This is also for the reconstruction of a wooden stairs staircase, which is on the western facade. Uh, it has a small landing and it provides access to a second floor dwelling unit. This is to be replaced with a wood framing, uh, wood framed staircase and composite treads. Here is a photo of the existing north facade. Again, uh, the historic stone uh, foundation wall will remain as is. And the western facade with that staircase. So this will also be the horizontal lap siding. And these materials are proposed to match what was approved in twenty twenty-two for the um, eastern facade. This image doesn't show up very well on our uh, projector, but the, the white areas do show horizontal lap siding. Same here, uh, with a very simple staircase design. In that staircase, uh, does protrude across the property line and it exists in an access easement uh, that is recorded and in place. A historic inventory report from nineteen ninety-one indicated that this is a contributing structure to the historic district, but the reports don't mention um, anything other than the uh, primary facade uh, facing Manitou Avenue. Uh, so staff evaluated the Secretary of the Interior Standards and uh, Manitou Springs Design Guidelines and found that uh, two of those guidelines apply to the proposed development. And those have to do with materials and uh, staff found that the proposed materials are compatible based on the approval of MCAC twenty-two oh nine, which approved the same siding materials. So while design guidelines typically um, prefer that the materials match exactly, they do uh, provide in um, they do support uh, updated materials for uh, fire resiliency and um, just updated modern materials. So uh, in an effort to be consistent with what was approved a couple of years ago, staff recommends approval of uh, this MCAC and does not recommend any conditions. Uh, here is the motion language and this concludes my presentation.
May I ask a question? Hello?
Question for staff?
Yes, I had one, Laura. Um, on the creek level, what's the siding on the creek facade? What is the siding there?
Uh, it is uh, natural stone for the majority of it. Um, there, I think, is some waterproofing going on um, in the photo, but that is, I believe, also natural stone underneath that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff, um, commissioners?
Did you say that the um, the proposed new siding will match the siding on the east side that's already been proved? Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Slap siding?
Yep. Uh, and it's also the cement fiber siding.
Um, I have another question about color. What was represented in the drawings, it's gonna be white, which is a change from what's existing. Is that the same color as the other side?
Uh, we can ask the applicant, but please be aware that color is not within the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, will the applicant please come up to the table and um, introduce yourselves and give your address as well? Just um, turn on that button in the middle. That'll turn the mic on. There you go.
Shemi Shlomo, seven twenty Manitou Ave.
Glenn Brooke, the designer, uh, assisting Shemi, fifty-four ninety Red Sky Drive, Colorado Springs.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add to the presentation?
No, the color question will match the existing color that's on the eastern side of the building right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant?
Is the, I had a question. Is the reveal going to be the same then? It's four inches on the front facade and then it'll be that on the side?
Well, the, yeah, the, the reveal on the eastern side will be matched with the western side. The front facade, street side facade right now is a stucco finish, uh, appropriate with the period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I think we have to discuss, don't we? Close the public meeting and then discuss.
Uh, I believe we also need to ask if there are any uh, other parties that are here to speak on behalf of or in opposition to.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment on this project?
Sorry, uh, could I ask the applicants please to return to their seats and we'll call them back if they have any follow-up questions? Thank you.
Okay, so I guess there are no comments. And commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions? Okay. Now I will ask for a motion.
Do we get to discuss it? I, I guess I'm confused. I thought we.
Oh, ju- okay.
I mean, I don't, it's okay, but I, I mean, I don't have anything to discuss, but usually we have, in case someone wants to discuss at that point, but however you want to do it then.
From what it sounds like, it would be a nice improvement.
Definitely sounds like a good project.
Yeah, the side that's sort of open with the vertical ones, that will be much better and blend in so much better.
Right.
That looks right now.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Um, I motion to approve MCAC twenty-five oh seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes, five zero. And thank you to the applicants. Nice project. Okay. Next, um, staff presentation for MCAC twenty-five oh eight.
Thank you. Hold on just one moment while I get um, hopefully I can do this without it buffering every time. Okay, uh, MCAC twenty-five oh eight for exterior alterations at three-ten Michigan Avenue. Uh, this uh, MCAC is for the reconstruction of an attached deck that has deteriorated uh, and a change of materials. The uh, property is own general residential and is in the Minnehaha and Pilot Knob Historic Sub-District. The existing wooden, wooden deck is approximately two hundred and eighty-eight square feet and is constructed along the southern facade of the main level of the structure. Uh, it is wood decking, stairs, framing, railing and a pergola. Uh, the proposed deck would have steel framing and a steel railing, composite decking and treads and no pergola. Here's a photo of the existing deck and pergola and you can see the railing in it as well. Um, so there's not a ton of information about when the deck was constructed. It does serve the addition, uh, which I believe was added in the seventies. So I feel fairly confident in stating that uh, the deck was probably not around during the period of significance for the structure. So even though the structure itself is a contributing structure to the historic district, I don't believe that the deck played a part in that. Um, furthermore, there is um, you know, pretty um, simple framing, uh, very simple railing and um, this is constructed um, kind of on top of a stone retaining wall, which I think is historic. You can see it in, in this photo here. Um, there's very steep topography on the site, as with much of uh, the town. So um, the proposed design would use the existing uh, footers would just kind of offset them a little bit so that um, the ste- steel framing could go in. Um, this is the proposed elevation um, with just kind of steel vertical elements, steel trusses and uh, the steel railing. Uh, they do not propose any change to the footprint.
Oh man, I can't, I can't hear anything.
Hey there folks, sorry, we're having internet issues and maybe it's bad. Yeah, it's bad. Okay, we think it's back.
Okay, we can hear you.
Uh, the proposed composite decking uh, will be one of the two colors um, identified. Again, color is not within the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission. But it was provided by the applicant. So, again, uh, very similar that I believe chapter four of the Historic District Design Guidelines would um, come into play. And again, it says um, that uh, in regards to materials and the change of materials to use materials that match the original when you can't replace it with historic materials. So right now there is um, it's wood, it's not historic. The design guidelines do identify that um, no, sorry, I moved forward too fast. It wasn't common to have very intricately designed railings um, in, in Manitou Springs except for on front porches. So given that this is a rear porch, um, I don't believe that applies and I think that uh, the steel uh, proposed railing um, i- is probably similar enough to um, kind of mimic what is there currently, but just with a different material. That being said, if you know, if the HPC is not comfortable with that, the applicant has indicated that they could use um, pressure-treated wood for um, the framing, the railing, the decking. Um, they would just uh, request that the HPC consider allowing use of these more modern materials. Again, in an effort to um, be more sustainable in the long term, um, or, or more resilient, excuse me. So uh, staff uh, recommends the condition that the railing and balusters be replaced with wood to match the existing design as allowed by Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, uh, with planning staff having the approval authority over the final design. Uh, I've provided this uh, condition kind of as a guide in case HPC decides to implement that. However, um, honestly, I kind of feel like this could go either way and be appropriate. So, um, here's some more motion language and that concludes my presentation.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
Yeah, did you just say that, that the recommendation from staff is to go with wood? Is that what was written up there?
It was, um, I don't feel that strongly about it and I don't believe that the guidelines have a very strong stance on it. But I, I think, given how the Historic Preservation Commission has viewed items like this in the past, that would be the recommended motion language and I kind of provided it mostly so that it would, so that we wouldn't forget to um, give staff the authority to make that final approval um, so that they don't have to come back if they have to change the design to wood.
So, so Chelsea, so wood is something that we do recommend a lot, isn't it, or um, when we're looking at railings in a contributing building? So, so what you're saying, it could go either way, either way, as we decide that?
Right, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I was a little confused for a moment.
Could you show the photo from the street again?
Uh, so you can't actually see this from the street. Um, there is a photo from their lawn, this one?
Okay, so you wouldn't be able to see this porch from the street?
No.
Okay.
Well, um, you can see it from Pilot Knob Road. You can see it pretty clearly through the trees.
Yeah, I, when I was uh, you know, we kind of do an initial drive-by on, on Google Maps and it was really difficult to see the deck. Um, you could see the pergola, which again, they're not proposing to reconstruct and you could see the, the peaked roof, but I felt that it wasn't very visible.
I, I think the railing is pretty visible and it'll probably be more visible in winter. Any more questions for staff? Okay, could the applicants please come up and state your name and address?
And could you have them speak close to the mic when they come up too?
And I would also like to um, point out that Hector from Footprint DEX is also online.
Yes, hello.
So James O'Hara from three-ten Michigan Avenue?
And Melissa O'Hara.
Commissioners, questions?
Did they want to say anything?
Uh, I, I can, like, do, if, if you don't mind me speaking, that'd be great. Um, so the, the railing that you guys are talking about, the neighbors uh, on, on both sides of the, the of, of their home and, and on the back lot, they all have the similar uh, steel uh, uh, railing. So we thought that was appropriate for us to kind of follow that. We didn't think it was gonna be uh, a big thing about it.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to the presentation?
Yes, um, also the metal posts and the metal railing is also a fire mitigation so that you know, if there's wildfires that would not burn. you know, if there's wildfires that would not burn, it would be beneficial to us as homeowners. You can see the deck railing, but like Hector said, the neighbors around us have the steel railing, so it would fit in, and you really can't see it. We're on a curve, so you really can't see the deck from the street. I mean, you can't really tell what it is by just looking at it because you're so far away. And we do have a neighbor here that I don't think he proposes what we're doing.
Can you need to speak into the mic? You fade out.
For me? I'm sorry. We have a neighbor here that is also hopefully in support of this project to improve, you know, the neighborhood, and I think it fits in with what Hector said, it fits in with other neighbors. They have the metal railings on some stairs and across the street. It's more visible when you drive down our road, Manitou Avenue, you cannot see the deck. There's nothing, only we could see it is like Pilot Knob, but you'd have to be purposely looking up to our house to see the deck. If you're just driving, you wouldn't even know it was there. Do you have anything to add?
Our purpose for this proposal is to make it look better. You saw it. We inherited it when we bought the home six years ago. We've been saving up to make it look nice.
What material is the, will the pergola be made of?
No.
There is no pergola.
It's going to be removed.
It's been removed.
Okay.
One last thing, if I may. That concrete wall or retaining wall that's there, we're not going to be touching that. We're not going to be messing with it at all. It's not going to be in our way. Also, the, like, like, he said, everything that we're doing is just to mitigate fire. You know, I built a lot of decks, and on this side of the highway, there's, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of fire mitigation. I'm surprised that Manitou hasn't had that yet, so what we're doing here is just to have, be one step ahead and, you know, be mindful of wildfire and things like that, and that's what we, you know, we offered our customers, the steel frame. So, you know, we're also being careful with what could happen.
So I had, my insurance is going up $1,200 this year, and I called a couple of different insurance companies, and they said, well, we're not going to insure you because you're in the fire district. So I think this would help mitigate, you know, any fires that may come from the back area that the deck would not catch on fire first and then set our house on fire, so.
And I think Manitou is doing things for mitigation. I mean, it's not something we're ignoring since we've done mitigation at our home, and it was encouraged by Manitou, and they have programs for us, so we are doing things.
That's great.
Any more comments from?
I have one more comment, though, but if it, what Chelsea said, it's on the fence. So I mean, if you could go either way, I wish you would hopefully go the way of the new materials because that would help mitigate fire. It's not an eyesore, or it's not going to be an eyesore, you know, nobody's going to say, oh, look at, they have metal up there instead of wood. It's just not going to be an issue, I don't think, with their surrounding neighbors or anybody driving down the street.
Okay, well, I always hesitate to go with anything other than wood because it's not really consistent with the neighborhood, but you make a good case with the wildfire issue. So I think I would probably go along with that, and the composite deck also sounds like very practical.
But aren't we going to discuss? Before we make a motion or decide that we like it?
Personally, I'm for the new material and the steel, so.
Could, could we please open the public hearing?
Okay.
Yeah, for the record, I, maybe that was an oversight, Chair Kinsit. We have to open the public hearing for each MCAC, so I just want to make a record that the public hearing is open effective as of staff's presentation, and then we should close the public hearing before we have discussion.
Okay, okay, well, I thought we were still asking questions of the applicant. Are we finished?
And that's fine, just let's just close the public hearing before we go into discussion.
Then we can open the public comment. And the applicants can take your seats. Any statements in favor? Yes, would you like to come up?
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Low, LOW. I do live next door. I'm at 312 Michigan Avenue. And I would want to speak in support of the composite material. It is a fire risk area, as they've already pointed out. We do walk our dogs frequently down Michigan Avenue and Pilot Knob. I do not see the deck per se coming up Pilot Knob, so I do not think the concern about it, you know, not looking appropriate for the neighborhood is is really that strong. The trees, as you can see, kind of block most of the deck coming up from Pilot Knob that you don't see. You see the top of the house, you know, and that's really about it. We do not see the deck from our house either. We live right, we live right next door, and we don't see the deck from our house. I mean, either coming down the street of Michigan Avenue, you do not see the back of their house either. So I think as we all kind of get in this situation where our wooden decks, our traditional wooden decks are starting to crumble, and there are more appropriate materials to use that, that do have fire mitigation properties to them and do look just as good and will last 50 years as opposed to 20 years. You know, I think it would, I think it would, you know, be appropriate to, you know, start to approve these types of projects, and I'm in favor of my neighbors using composite material on their deck.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There any more comments? Okay, we will close the public comment portion and see if the commissioners have any more discussion.
Sure, I'll weigh in here. I think in the past, we have always made quite a point of the fact that from somewhere in Manitou, you can see a property. So the fact that the notion that it's visible is usually restricted to the public right-of-way. That's the principal public right-of-way that the house is on. Because again, I could see that deck from my hillside on the south side of Manitou, but that's really not the appropriate approach, I think. So I think the real criteria is, is it visible, really visible from the front of the house, and it's not? And I think while we haven't revised our guidelines in quite some time, my guess is that we are going to be putting more and more emphasis on fire safety kind of issues. So I'm actually in favor of the applicant's approach that they use metal. Thank you.
And this, to things, I'm, you know, I'm a person that really wants wood, but it makes sense with what Ann said, that everything is visible. We live up on a hill, and we see a lot more than a lot of people do. So I understand about changing. If it was on the front and visible, I would stick with wood, but I understand that this seems to be something that's going to be coming with our increase in fires, hopefully not in Manitou, but with increase in fires generally. Thanks, Ann, for that comment.
I agree that the we have to, we have to make decisions, you know, now especially for fire mitigation. It is important, and it appears in this project, that the applicant's making a lot of effort to make it look like it does existing, but with newer materials which are fire resistant, which I think is really important.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve MCAC 2508 with the metal frame and not wood.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on. Chelsea, I was wondering if we should move 2509 to the end since that's the city, and then we can...
I would like to ask our attorney Katie if we can do that mid-meeting or if we needed to amend the agenda at the beginning.
That's okay. If there's, if there's a motion now to change the order of the action items, we can have a motion and proceed from there. But let's, let's have a motion and approve that now.
So I'll move that we move item 3, MCAC 2509 to the, the item, the last item on the agenda.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, so we will move on to number 4, MCAC 2510, 106 Deer Path.
Okay, MCAC 2510 for exterior alterations at 106 and 106 and 1/2 Deer Path Avenue. The applicants, Michael and Susan Bruner, are with us today. This is a non-contributing resource. This determination was triggered by this MCAC. It is in the General Residential Zone District and in the Midland Historic District. And here is an overview of the house. It's kind of just right down the road from us. And the request, the replacement of all existing wood double-hung sash windows with new vinyl sash windows of the same configuration, that is no muttons or lights. It is also the installation of vinyl windows within the existing openings, and they will maintain the current size, scale, and placement of the windows that are currently on the structure. And also like to add that approval for the replacement of any necessary repairs because this replacement request is partially due to degradation of the current windows. And here is a current window there on the left and the proposed change. They're keeping the same configuration size, opening style. For the visibility, most of the windows are, are not visible from the public right-of-way. The applicants also wanted to note that the surrounding properties in the neighborhood also have vinyl windows to include, two that are across the street and a few neighboring properties. The photographs for these were included with the packet. I'm not going to go over them during this. Here is an example of visibility. We have the side facade looking north on Deer Path that's looking towards City Hall. You can see one window there has limited visibility from the front. The two windows that are visible or relatively visible, this changes in the wintertime where visibility is a little, is a little better than it is now. And, and on the other side, looking south or away from City Hall, no visibility. So the applicants believe that the existing windows are over 50 years old and beyond repair, and I do have some, I do have some photos that weren't included in the packet that we'll go over in this. But the, but the windows, the glasses are single pane. And there have been past attempts to try and improve the efficiency of the windows during the winter months, which included covering the windows with plastic and blankets. And here is, here are a few photos of the current state of the windows. If you would like me to zoom in on one, I'll do my best, or if you'd like me to pause, just let me know. Here's some interior, and that's when I, I also added the request to fix any necessary repairs as well, which would include those areas around the window itself. And that concludes my presentation. The motion language, the board can approve the MCAC, approve the MCAC with conditions, deny the MCAC, or postpone the MCAC to October 8, 2025.
Commissioners, do you have questions for staff?
I just was curious, the vinyl windows, what's on them? The windows right now are, I assume are wood, is what you're saying? And then would the vinyl windows somehow show up more on the edges? Or is it the same, that they're white around now and there'd be more white around, or what's that?
Bear with, flip this photo. So do you mean around the, kind of the window border?
Yeah, that you would see from the outside, is it?
Yeah, I think it'll, it'll be pretty similar in the way that they are. From the looks of it, the windows are put in from the back instead of the front or from the outside, I mean, which is, let me find the picture that might make it a little more clear. So, so something like this where they're, they're set in from the inside rather than the out.
I believe the white in that first photo that you were seeing was just flashing between the, the window and the stucco.
Okay.
Right, yeah, it's like a screen.
Okay. And is it going to be the new windows, single pane or double pane, or?
I believe they're double pane.
Okay.
I think that in the, in the write-up you gave us, you talked about the screens that we're going to be staying on the exterior or keep or retaining the, the screens that are there now, is that?
So it's not going to be the current screens, but they're, they want to kind of keep the windows as similar as they can. So since the current windows have screens, the proposed change will also come with screens, not the same screens, but screens nonetheless.
Any more questions?
And just one more, and the size is the same, it's not being enlarged or made smaller?
Correct, yeah, there's going to be no, no change to the, the fenestration size.
Okay, thank you.
Will the applicants please come forward? And state your name and address, please.
My name is Susan Bruner. My address is 1855 Miniola in Colorado Springs. We are the owners of the house and of 106 Deer Path.
My name is Mike Bruner, and I live at 1855 Miniola and inherited this house.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything to add to your presentation?
You did a good job. Sac did a great job putting together everything we threw at him. My biggest hope is that that screen will be able to go right over what's put in, and so it should not change the visibility or the, the look of that window, if I'm correct.
That is a screen that you're looking at right there.
Yeah, so the yellow, the yellow part, right?
Yeah.
The yellow is screen, oh, okay.
It's cruising.
So it'll look similar to that, you think?
Yeah, it should look the same.
Except where he's, where it was painted red, it will now be white. Which in 1975, they were white. Which in nineteen seventy-five, they were white.
Okay. Um, Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
I didn't have any other questions than what I asked already. Uh, since you brought up the screens. They will be new screens or you're, you're?
I'm not sure how that will work. Just thinking about this, the little, they're like outside. And I think that those would go back on. I may be wrong, but.
There, there is new screens with the new windows. It's really, the windows are going to be modern and updated. They, uh, it's double pane designed to keep the cold out. Because, I mean, the house is literally freezing in the winter time. I mean, it's cold, just so much air comes in the, through the windows. And, uh, but the screen is separate. There's only, there's four screws that hold them, uh, in place.
Yeah.
And we can easily put them, uh, hang them back up.
Yeah, those, those likely wouldn't be able to be screwed into the vinyl window. Um, the frame, like they could be on a wooden frame, but.
No, they can be.
They could?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, they can.
That, that's not an important feature to me. I was just curious about it because it was in the write-up. Um, I think going with a window that's going to keep the house warmer is a good idea and it looks very similar to what's there. Um, and however the screens work with it, I think is the best way to do it.
Any more questions, Commissioners? No? Okay, we can open up for public comment and you may take your seats.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments? Okay, we will close, uh, the public comment part of, um, the hearing. Um, Commissioners, more discussion? Anyone have any more comments?
I just wanted to clarify, you know, on the screen issue, it's, it's, you know, it's not a gigantic issue, but just to understand it. So the original screens, which are part of the historic front of the house and the windows could be still kept, which would of course would save money too. And they haven't really decided whether it'll be the old ones or new ones. And so that would be okay. I mean, I, do you see a problem with that, Chelsea? That we just leave it up to the applicant to decide, uh, whether to keep the old or bring in the new?
Um, I think, I think it's, um, I think it's okay to leave it up to the applicants since I, I think the current state of every screen isn't.
Yeah, I'm thinking they're old and they may have some issues.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve M C A C, is it twenty-five ten?
Yes.
Um, as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion is approved five zero. Um, okay, next, um, for staff, M C A C two-five eleven, one ninety Chelton Road.
And, and sorry if I can just interject for a second. I hate to be tedious, but let's just announce that we're opening a public hearing. Um, once we move on to the next M C A C. And then we'll open public comment, close public comment, and then, um, close the public hearing before we have deliberations and a vote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so.
So she wants you to open a public hearing at the very beginning. Like right now.
Like right now? Oh, okay. Oh, for each, um, for each item. Oh.
Yes.
Okay, okay. We will now open the public hearing for M C A C two-five eleven.
Great, thank you. Um, I will work with, uh, Katie and we'll, we'll modernize your, uh, your script in your kind of order of proceedings, uh, before the next hearing.
Perfect.
So, uh, M C A C twenty-five eleven at one ninety Chelton Road, uh, is also for exterior alterations. And this application uh, is to reface a portion of the stone foundation and to replace four aluminum framed windows with wood windows. This is, uh, this property is zoned low density residential and is in the Log Cabin Historic Sub District. This house, uh, originally had a front porch that was, um, kind of enclosed in, uh, I think it was the seventies. And, uh, the foundation under that portion of the structure is deteriorating. And so the owner is going to stabilize that portion of the foundation with an internal, I believe a concrete wall, though it may be, uh, beams and piers. Um, but that is not within HPC purview. However, uh, the new foundation structure will then be clad in stone and mortar to match other portions of the original foundation. As well as the chimney and that, that kind of, um, facade is within HPC purview. Uh, the owner also is seeking to replace four aluminum framed windows with wood framed windows. Uh, they will have decorative mullions and will replicate a wave patterned wood trim. The existing foundation, and again, this is only under the enclosed porch portion of the structure. Um, has a different type of stone cladding on it. Um, it's flagstone that's kind of been laid on end and the mortar in between those pieces is failing. So, um, the, like I said, the, the owner is going to have that internal structure repaired. And then we'll clad it in, um, stone that I believe much of it was collected from her site. Um, and the intent is to match, um, these images here, which are, uh, foundation and the stone chimney that are elsewhere on the structure. Um, here you can see one of the windows that is to be, um, replaced. And you can also see the, the white trim there. It has kind of a, a wave pattern. So, um, on three of the windows, they will be, um, enlarged to become more, uh, vertical into, um, so they'll go from twenty-four inch tall to forty-eight inch tall. And then the wood wave trim will also, um, be replicated and installed to, uh, match the original. There is one window that is going to remain at twenty-four inch tall. Uh, the applicant has also identified, um, or referenced windows on a nearby structure on her neighbor's house. Um, so this is the intent that those windows will, um, be vertical casement windows, um, with decorative, uh, divided lights in them. Uh, the, the window structure will be, uh, wood framed. And, um, so those are the windows along the, the front of the house. I will make a note that the front of the house is set back approximately seventy feet from the public right of way. So it is, um, visible, yes, but, um, maybe not quite as much as other properties in the area. Um, this, uh, this property was found to be a contributing structure to the Historic Sub District. And as such, chapter four of the Historic District Design Guidelines, um, applies. Uh, several of the guidelines here, um, were found to apply and the application, um, meets these guidelines. So again, um, because this portion of the structure was not originally enclosed. It's unclear about whether or not, um, it, it, the, that, uh, in, enlarging the, it's not clear that enlarging the windows would be in keeping with the original architectural character of the, the main portion of the house. Or if maintaining the aluminum windows that are original to the nineteen seventy enclosure would be more appropriate. Um, there's this concept that, um, architectural features should be of their own time. And so though, um, bringing this, bringing these windows, um, modern and having them replicate a, an appearance of a historic window for a portion of the house that they didn't exist on is the, I think that could be a point of discussion for the HPC and whether or not they support, um, moving towards wood and, um, that vertical orientation of these windows. Um, I will say that the, uh, guideline four point one five for architectural details such as trim um, shall be, uh, preserved and, uh, replaced. I do feel that that is being met with this, um, with this project and, um, as well as guideline four point one six, which is renovating an exposed stone foundation. Um, to preserve and maintain the existing stone veneer. I do feel that, um, replicating that stone veneer with stone found on the site is about as true to that guideline as you can get. So, um, with that, uh, staff does not recommend any conditions. Uh, should the HPC find it appropriate to grant M C A C twenty-five eleven. And here is the motion language and that concludes my presentation.
Are you still there? Hello?
Questions from Commissioners or staff?
Um, I had two questions for staff. One is in the letter from the applicant, it said the windows would go from twenty-four to thirty-two and you said to forty-eight. Is that a? So which is it?
Me misremembering and I apologize. Um, so they are to thirty-two inch then, okay.
Okay. And then the question I had is on the current windows. I can't tell, are there divided lights?
No, there are no divided lights on the existing aluminum framed windows.
And when the Fox divided lights that they're, um, asking for, requesting, what is a Fox? Light?
Could, uh, I would ask that we direct that question to the applicant when she's called forward.
Okay, thank you. But they're not asking for an internal. Well, I'll ask the applicant. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Okay.
I do have one. Sorry, I was slow on that. Um, uh, are the windows in, in the photos that you've shown, the, I guess it's, um, the one that shows sort of the, the two aluminum fr- frame windows on the, is that the front of the house or what you're presenting is the front? Yeah. Uh, are those the two that will get deeper, uh, like be enlarged?
So it's, um, let me pull up that section of the write-up. I believe it is. Um, so yes, these two windows as well as one on the side near the driveway, I believe. Um, that will be expanded to thirty-two inches. However, the one on the, uh, northern facade will remain at twenty-four inches.
I have a follow-up to that. Um, so in the image that you showed of a neighboring house, um, with referencing those windows. Those are vertical windows, but installed to create a wide horizontal window. Um, are we going to see, is it that? It, so is it going to be several windows mounted together or just one? Window that's the same width but taller or deeper?
Yes, it will, um, it will not have the continuous kind of back-to-back window appearance that the neighboring property has. However, that, um, I believe that, uh, this image shows another enclosed, enclosed porch. Um, because that was fairly popular thing to do at that time. Um, so, uh, what you would see is kind of one set of the, the two casements. Um, so there would be two of those along.
It would be like a set like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So two separate sets, sets then.
Did you have another comment, Joy?
And I was just following up, so I understand it. So it's two sets. It's not like a row in that other house. It's just two sets. Because the width is going to stay the same, just the depth is going to change, right?
Correct.
Okay, that, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, can the applicant please come forward? State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bryley and I live at one ninety Chelton Road in Manitou in the Log Cabin District.
Okay. And do you have anything to add to the presentation?
I can clarify a little bit about the windows.
Thanks.
In my opinion, the current aluminum windows are ugly and they're als- also, um, pretty drafty. Um, hornets are currently coming through the cracks, um, and creating a bit of a problem there. Um, so my, my attempt is to be more in alignment with the log cabin um, facade as well as the, the other, the neighboring house that is shown. We actually share a common driveway and I believe those two cabins may well have been built at the same time and to complement each other. So my goal is to sort of complement that. Um, my porch enclosure is not the same as my neighbor's porch enclosure. So, um, you know, to be practical about it, I'm, I'm trying to go, the current two front windows, which are the main ones that are seen from the street, are currently twenty-four by sixty inches each one. The new windows that I'm proposing will be still sixty inches wide. But they'll be thirty-two inches tall to sort of make for a little bit more depth in the appearance. As well as, you know, kind of match the house next door. They will have muttons, um, which are, the original structure had true divided lights. I don't have the money to buy windows with true divided lights. Um, but they would give the appearance. It would be consistent with the rest of the, the cabin, the original structure. Um, what else? Oh, the, the two windows on the face would have, it would be a casement window, then a fixed window and then a casement window in one unit. So it'd be twenty inches each for each of the two windows. Okay? Then the one on the end facing the driveway is not as wide. It's not sixty inches wide. I think it's forty inches wide. So it would be just, um, a sliding window with still the, um, mutton inserts to give the appearance of divided lights. The one on the north face is again, is minimally visible from the street. Um, it's, it's facing north. I didn't see the point in expanding the size of a north facing window. Um, so it will stay the same, but it will also have the divided lights.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions?
I had a question, Laura. Can I ask it?
Absolutely.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt someone else and they didn't see their hand. Um, when you talk about the divided lights and that I understand about cost. You said they're going to be inserted. So they're between the glass or are they going to be out, the outside of the window?
Inside, which is. Which is exactly what is the windows that are next door.
So inside the glass?
They'll be inside the window.
Okay, so they'll be in, okay. Thank you, I was trying to sort of visualize that.
To clarify, Joy, I think. You you I think the applicant is saying that they will be on the interior. Side of the window, not between the panes of glass.
Correct. Okay, that's what I'm understanding now and thank you for the clarification. Because that makes me feel better when I understand it.
And what are? Did you state um? That the windows will be wood, the new windows will be um?
There will be wood with exterior cladding.
Okay.
It just. Wood just doesn't hold up against the weather here.
Right, right. But that's a. That's a reasonable choice, I think.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, and um. Do your existing other windows? What type are they? Are they casements like that or?
There are no. Other casement windows. Um, I kind of have a variety of double hung. Double hung on the driveway side. Um, facing on the north. Is um, it has a a middle fixed pane window that's about. Forty inches and then two small siding windows, sliding windows um that come together on either side of that.
Okay. Any more questions? From staff? From commissioners, I'm sorry.
I can, I don't know if if the commission um received the comments, but Chuck Smith, who actually. Created the log cabin district. Wrote a an email in support of the project. I can read it if you'd like.
Please.
Okay. Sir, ma'am, I have spoken to Nancy Bryley at one night Shelton Road relating to her project to replace the windows and to improve the stone foundation. On the east side of her house. I find her efforts consistent with the intent of Manitou Springs Historic Preservation Ordinance. I would recommend approval, Charles LT Smith, twelve Spur Road.
Thank you. I think that's consistent also and because. It was a porch at at one time, that'll open up the. Get it more light, it'll look more like a porch. I think then. So, any more comments? Okay.
Could we please open the public comment portion?
Right. You can take your seat, thank you, and then we'll open the public comment. Are there any public comments about the project?
I don't see any online.
No? Okay, then we will close the public comments section and um.
And close the public hearing, I think was the next portion. And then deliberation.
And close the public hearing. Okay. 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 Um, so if there are no more comments from commissioners?
I would like to ask a question. Or.
Okay.
In the, okay, um, I guess we'd like to know from the other commissioners. And Anne, you might know this. Um. And enlarging the window is going to change the way the cabin looks. Um, in the log cabin district, because you know, it's not much, but it will change that. Is. I I guess is that something that we've done in the past? And have we put um the? Not the real divided lights, but the. Artif- not artificial, but the Fox ones, you know, the ones that aren't the faux ones that aren't quite. The same.
Yeah, I think yes on both counts.
Okay.
We would have approved windows that. Were consistent with the look of the log cabin district but may have been different than what. Were installed fifty years ago or whenever that was.
Okay, in the seventies when they did that.
Indeed approve. Divided lights that don't have the external on the outside.
Okay, thanks, Anne. That's what I wanted to. Understand.
So I would just comment that I think. I agree with Chuck Smith, I guess. I think this will be an improvement. Um, obviously, the applicant is attempting to make it look like it's more part of the log cabin district. I think when the. Open porch was enclosed, whenever that was, they probably didn't have that. Objective necessarily in mind. So I think this will be an improvement and I would be all for it.
Okay, thanks, Anne.
Yeah, I would, we're spending a lot of time talking about the windows. Which I think. Sounds like we're all in agreement that that's a good idea. I think the the. Updating or improving the foundation is a really smart thing is to stabilize it, but also. Using the materials from your from your site is a great idea. Um, and matching the rest of the foundation i- is going to be. A nice improvement. Um, even though I think the flat stone that's there isn't an eyesore by any means. But matching it to the to the other stone would be great. So I think that's a really nice idea.
Plus, since it it does need repair and now's the time to do it and it'll look, it'll look really nice. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve MCAC, excuse me, twenty five eleven as proposed.
And I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Okay. We can now. Move on to. Twenty five oh nine, six oh six Manitou Avenue.
Okay, MCAC twenty five oh nine, window replacement at six oh six Manitou Avenue. Um, we have Snyder Electric um presenting on behalf of the city of Manitou Springs. This is a contributing resource. It is in the Public Facility Zone District and the Commercial Core Historic Sub-District. And here is the location. And the request, um, so I've kind of broken it out by um portion of the building. Um, they want to replace three windows on the east facade, that's um inside the kitchen. They want to replace one window on the northeast facade. It's also in the kitchen, but it is a room separate. Um, I believe it is for the the women's club. It's their room. Um, also replace um ten windows on the north facade. Or I'm sorry, fifteen windows, that's a typo on on my part. Um, there is fifteen windows on the north facade, ten. In Memorial Hall, one of which you can't see, it is behind this room uh or the storage room here. Um, in Memorial Hall, one in the records closet room and then four in uh um in two offices, two in each office. And they would also like approval to um. To conduct any necessary repairs um discovered after window removal and um. To make any necessary repairs that may result from window in um installation. Um, and I also put in here um any ancillary interior repairs. Um, in the kitchen and I'll have a picture of this as well. They would need to relocate the light switches and outlet conduit that kind of go between. And between windows. Um, and the same to um. To touch up any interior cosmetic issues that may result from window installation. Um, and here is a site plan. I know it's, it is a bit. It it is a bit hard to make sense of it and I have these pictures broken out and the the next slides as well. Um, but this is just kind of showing. Um, the placement of the windows, we have the three that are in the kitchen, the one that's in, I believe it, I I do believe it's the women's club room there on the. Um, northeast and the ten here. And Memorial Hall and the others on the other side of um the building. And and please let me know if you want me to stop or zoom in on. Um, any portion of these slides. Um, there are quite a few. Um, so here is uh photos of the exterior portion of the kitchen. Those windows are wood. I did a little research to try and find. Uh, an age or a date. To see if maybe these windows are or aren't original and I couldn't find anything. Um, the mutton profile kind of make it seem like they could be original. But are no document, there's no documentation on it.
On that one window, just while it's up, because there's so many. So the new windows would look like that exactly?
Um, I'll I'll have a kind of an out, I'll have like an overview of what those windows. And then we also have with us, um Snyder Electric did bring kind of like a something that they can pass around to show what the windows will look like. Um, but no, I think the proposed windows will not have. The 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 dividing lights. They would look, they would look as they do here in Memorial Hall. Um, here is uh other photos of the uh exterior kitchen windows. And photos uh behind us here, these are photos of Memorial Hall. And the exterior photos of the offices. And it was kind of hard to take um photos that were relatively bright. Um, I know the ones here aren't really a big issue since we can just kind of look over. Uh, behind our backs, but I have them here for clarity. Oh, I should also note uh for these particular windows, the aluminum does sit on top of a. Portion of wood that is a that that is a part of the other windows, the wood windows. Um, and this would kind of seek to remove that since the window. Or the window replacement or proposed replacements are measured from top to bottom of the window frame itself. And photos from the kitchen. And I'm going to have to zoom in. I I did mention about the relocation of an outlet which is here and I'll see if I can zoom in maybe. Um, so there is an outlet here that it kind of goes through the window split and then uh so that would need to be replaced. Since the proposed windows have a different configuration, at least in that in that particular part of. Um, City Hall. Uh, this is the window for the records room or what was the old records room and now I'm not sure, it's just an empty room. Um, and um photos of the office, there are four, but I only have three at the moment. But they're all, they're the same, they would be the same. And that concludes this presentation. The motion language um is as follows. Uh, the board can appro- approve. The MCAC, approve the MCAC with conditions, deny the MCAC. And postpone the MCC. And I know I I thought I had a picture here of the proposal, as we do have the. The the one that was brought with us that we can pass around and I can grab it real quick and then in the meantime, I'll try and find a. The submitted material as well for those online.
Um, while we're looking at this, do commissioners have questions for staff?
I I just had a question if I could ask. Um. So it sounds like the divided lights in the kitchen, the records room and the office, they're not going to be divided anymore?
That is, that is the pro- the proposed. Um, change, yes, that they would. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen um because Chelsea brought has found the the window so that you can kind of get a better idea that way.
Can I ask why we're not, why you're not proposing the divided?
Um, I I would have to save uh that question for the applicant. I know there was a lot of talks. That I wasn't necessarily a part of. Um, so there may be some information that that they may be able to offer that I can't.
And um, I'll also chime in. Uh, this is part of an energy efficiency um. Project overall. We're looking at uh multiple city facilities and doing um. I think it is a type of performance contracting where um. Essentially, the the costs of energy savings will help pay for the improvements themselves. Um, so. It. I believe it was um. And it kind of focusing on uh getting as much um. Insulation as possible um for as low a price as possible. So um. I I know that doesn't. Meet the historic intent, but um we can, we can pass it on to our contractor as well.
So the divided parts make it less efficient?
It can depend um on whether they are interior, which I've heard um the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, not be in favor of in the past. Um, and if they are integral to the window, then they can, yes, be more susceptible to. You know, air leaks and uh ceiling issues and things like that.
Would um. That color, that brownish taupe color, is that the color that the?
I think, and I was talking with the applicant and they can definitely confirm when they get a chance that I. That that may have been a color that the the closest they could potentially get to.
Okay, um. I guess we'll have the applicant come up then.
Good evening. Uh, Rob Livingston, Schneider Electric. Um, color, the the darker color on that sample is the proposed color because it closely matches what's existing on the outside currently. Uh, with all the other, with vinyl windows, it's really hard to get like. Perfect match, but that that color specifically matches as best we can to the outside and would actually. Not necessarily blend in or stand out. Uh, it would be way worse if it had been like black or white or something like that, but that one does kind of uh disappear. Uh, for the most part.
Okay, thank you. And do you have anything else to add to the presentation?
Uh, no, uh, the staff did very well uh with the presentation. Um, and just to kind of reiterate the uh what. Uh, Zachary was referring to is the the bottom section that's underneath these would basically go away. So you're going to have a much bigger window that's going to go in there, allow more light and. Uh, it is part of the the energy efficiency that we're trying to achieve. So it's going to feel uh nice and. Uh, comfortable in here once, once the AC is done and that is complete.
If I could, um, sorry to interrupt, um, this. This application goes hand in hand with the previously approved and it's been some months for the HVAC upgrade and Rob himself was here for that one as well. Um, so this is kind of the the final portion of that. HVAC energy efficiency upgrade.
But it. So having divided lights. Mitigates all that once you put divided lights in or how they are now. The appearance would affect the energy efficiency of the windows?
So um, really going into it when we had uh put the the funding or the uh the energy analysis together, we had to, with the savings that we were. Using to pay for, you know, these type of improvements were limited to, uh, you know, having. Um, not have a bunch of special features on it such as the uh. Um, you know, the internal divided. Light or uh portions in there. Um, back here, it wasn't really uh too big of a deal because we were going to basically go with what's already here and I can understand. Uh, the concern with the, you know, the others. But that was, that was the driving factor was cost.
Okay. So has it been determined that the original now are the? The divided light windows, are those the original to the building?
These ones behind us, we're not sure. Um, I had my window guy here and he's he's been in the industry for a very long time and. It's kind of hard to tell uh if they're original or not because it does look like it has the same type of filler material that kind of brings it up. brings it up a little bit higher. So it's, it's really difficult. Uh, and at the top, you can also see where it's, uh, it looks like it's been added on at some point. I would be very curious to see what was there originally.
So have they been evaluated as to whether they're repairable?
Uh, they have not.
Um, well, I don't know if this was discussed or not, but were, were there ever storm windows? Does anyone know?
There never were. Okay. There are on other windows in City Hall, I believe, um, towards the front of the building. However, um, I don't know about back here. Uh, I can say that when we had our planning director office, um, back uh, in one of the offices where these windows are being proposed, um, there were substantial gaps in the wood framing. Um, and then also you could tell, uh, just kind of by looking at it, that a number of the panes had been replaced over time, which of course happens, but it did not, um, do much to help with kind of energy efficiency. That was the coldest office that we had. So, um, yeah, I, I think that, um, just kind of my, my two cents, um, window upgrades, um, for efficiency sake is one of the standard components of this type of project. So they'd be looking at things like HVAC, windows, doors, um, any sort of, um, heating, water, um, fixtures, things like that. So it, it's more of like a package type project. And we're bringing it to you one piece at a time because that's how the city is being able to fund it. Um, so I, I do apologize that we haven't, um, maybe brought this um, with some sort of advanced notice, but in, in order to, um, not get into the, um, the limitations of the open meetings law, we didn't want to discuss it without it being actually on the agenda. So we are bringing it to you kind of piece by piece as we get the funding to complete these energy efficiency upgrades.
So we could get funding for the divided lights? But not at this moment is what you're saying?
Uh, no, I, sorry, I'm, I'm speaking, the, I'm, the, the window project as a whole is one component of a larger project.
If I could comment, um, I was going to ask about the, some sort of, um, mountains being in, included. And also I was going to ask if, if about storms and, and what kind of uh, alternatives have been investigated, you know, we, we're, uh, this being a city building. I think it's kind of important for the city to do that because we're asking our, our residents to do that. Um, and then that's kind of our job is to try to point residents in that direction, whether, whether they end up there or not. I mean, I think the city should do that too. Um, so if there's alternatives to, to look at, I think, I think we should, you know, you hear about that, explore that.
I agree. And since those buildings do, the, I'm sorry, the windows do appear to be in pretty good condition, actually, um, I think that should be evaluated, whether or not they can be
Yeah, I wanted to.
restored and, um, possibly with the addition of storms.
I wanted to follow up on what Matt said also. So like the mountains, was there an estimate for doing that? An estimate for not doing it?
I'm not sure. I, I wasn't privy to, to, uh, kind of like a lot of the budget, budget-ish, the budgets, uh, conversation and things like that. I'm just presenting the application.
Are we, are we going to open it to the public and then deliberate? Sounds like we're deliberating now and I'll, I'll join in if we are.
Uh, I, we do have an empty room here. Um, I, so we'll, we'll double check, um, and of course do the, uh, procedural. I did want to point out as well that there are, uh, did you say 15 windows? So it is also possible that, uh, certain windows be approved and certain windows not be approved.
Yeah, because we, well, we do have, well, the 10, all 10 windows here in Memorial Hall are aluminum as, um, as observed behind us. So, um, the only windows that are not aluminum are the, uh, the four that are in the kitchen and the five that would be on kind of the other side of the building.
Before we jump out of this, for, for the applicant, um, you had, you'd said that, that you weren't aware of having looked into other options with the divided lights or storms or anything like that. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, uh, because part of our energy analysis that we do that, you know, like Chelsea has mentioned, is part of the whole, the project as a whole, we don't look at refabbing a single pane, old windows. We look at what a new window is going to be for us.
Right. And I, I mean, I think all of us agree. We, we've talked with our residents about that, 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 you know, that's the balance, right? To, to improve energy efficiency, but also preserve the historic character of it. So I think that's kind of what we have to look at.
Do you think it's possible that you could not include the historic windows in this part of the project? I mean, does it have to be all 19 windows or?
Uh, I would say specifically for this room, yes, and I would.
Could you speak into the mic more?
I would venture, uh, for this room, for sure. Um, I would say we would need to, to move forward with them. However, the, um, the kitchen, you know, if, if you guys don't want to touch them, that's, that's totally fine too, but I would have reservations about those back offices because, uh, we have heard that they, there's some comfort, some serious comfort issues back there.
I just think it's important to retain any historic character that is still in decent condition and, um, because this is a public historic building and it's very important to retain that. Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay. So, um, we can, let's see, we don't have any public comment, correct? So you can, you can take your seat again. Thank you. And, um, oh, we should close the public hearing now. I don't know if I even opened it this time. Okay. So we'll close the public hearing and now we can discuss.
So I think there are issues to be considered. And I think a, a, a key one is visibility, as was pointed out. This is not the front of the building. And even the kitchen, because, and we faced that when we had the upgrades to the electrical system, there's not very much you can see because of the vegetation, even on the kitchen. So I think that may have been a mitigating factor for arguing that even though there were existing divided lights, maybe that wasn't necessary to retain those, but I think that's clearly within our purview. If we, as I think Zachary had said, if we want to say it's fine to replace the windows, the 10 in the hall, but we want more analysis on the current divided lights, I think we could say that. And that's sort of where I'm leaning. Even though totally very visible, but clearly if you walk around the back of the park there, you can see the offices and you can kind of see the kitchen from the, the park road.
And for a good portion of the year, there isn't, there are not leaves on the trees. So the vegetation isn't, isn't a great mitigating factor.
Well, and I, I think we ask our residents to really look at the windows and to do them as close as possible. And to me, I'm very uncomfortable not having those divided lights and those windows. And I think you're right, the leaves go away, trees die, you have to replace them. Um, and I understand about costs because we all are aware of costs as individuals and as a city, but at the same time, that would change, to me, it would change it so greatly that it would be a shame to lose that historic um, look of the building. And if they're original, we don't know for sure if they are or not. And even if they're only 50 years old or something instead of a hundred, I think we have to remain true to our historic guidelines. I understand that we need to perhaps approve the, the ones that are pretty clear and no lights, but I'm not comfortable saying the others.
I would even, um, I agree with you, Joy. I, I, I would even go so far as to say what I was hoping for in this was to have this, the, the windows in the hall do something to improve the character of them, sort of like our last applicant who was improving the character of her windows. Um, that would be nice to, to see that. We're not seeing that. We're just replacing them with the same type of open pane that, that we're seeing here, which doesn't feel to seem to have that same character as the rest of the windows. That's probably not something that we can ask for, but I would have liked to see that. So, um, I guess it's making me feel like, geez, you know, we, we should, we should push for something a little more carefully thought out.
Yeah, I agree with Matt. I think we should hold on to the historic character uh, for the windows that do have them. Um, and it would be nice, the ones that didn't all matched, but.
Yeah, and I, I tend to agree. I think these windows are, don't have much character, but they haven't had much character for a long, long, long while. I don't know if we even know if these were ever originally divided lights. I think it would be.
I'm not quite sure. Uh, I couldn't find any information about these windows being replaced. I could find some information about the city clerk's windows being replaced with aluminum ones, um, through city council minutes from the, the 1960s. So potentially around the same time, um, since the windows are very similar.
So, um, in anticipation of a conversation like this, Zach has drafted, um, couple alternative, uh, motion language options for you. You are of course welcome to propose something of your own design. Um, but I think, uh, staff would like some sort of direction about, is this being denied wholly? Is this being partially approved? Is this being tabled? So I think, uh, we just need some sort of clarification, um, because of course, as Zach stated, you know, this isn't necessarily a planning project and so we need to be able to communicate to the folks running the facilities improvements projects, um, exactly what HPC is looking for. Thank you.
Okay.
Zach has, is that what you said? He has some alternative motions?
I do, yes. And I'll have them here. Um, so these conditions, um, were approved, um, with the following conditions. Um, there were talks of, um, potential, um, budgetary, um, constraints, which would remove some of those wooden windows from the equation altogether. Um, namely the windows in the kitchen. Um, so this first, uh, motion language uh, pertains to that where while all windows identified in the application are hereby approved for replacement, the actual number replaced may be reduced due to budget constraints. Any reduction in scope shall not authorize window replacement beyond those approved in this application and such reduction shall not require a new or amended MCAC. And this, this, um, motion language allows us to alter, uh, alter the amount. Uh, well, let me, let me get that out a little better. Allows us to reduce the amount, um, in, in the chance that budgets, um, don't allow those to be replaced. Um, but I also have here, um, in anticipation of kind of the talks that were just going on, the approval is limited to the following windows, which the commission would specify. And replacement of any additional windows beyond those specified shall require a new MCAC, which would allow us to, um, or allow the approval of just the windows here in Memorial Hall and allow us to move forward with a, a new MCAC um, based on the recommendations that you guys have already kind of proposed for any remaining windows that would be, any windows that are um, wood or potentially original to the building.
And does that include the divided lights then? The ones with the divided lights?
That would be a part of the second condition here at the bottom, which would be a new MCAC that would consider any of any staff concerns, um, that have been discussed thus far. Um, it will allow us to approve just the windows here in Memorial Hall or those that are made, those are, are, um, aluminum, um, strictly aluminum.
So, uh, one, one of the things I did hear from the commission though is, um, really just wanting more information on what it would take to get divided lights in the new windows. So if that is what you're looking for, we could also, um, put together some language for uh, partial approval, perhaps for the windows in Memorial Hall, but tabling the rest of them or table the thing, the application altogether until we can gather that information and bring that back to you. I'm not sure that the budget of the project is within the scope of the HPC. Um, so I, I don't know if legally or even you know, from a staff perspective, if that is really going to help the conversation. Um, Fred might want to chime in here, but, um, that's, those are some other options that we have.
But if you're not responsible for the budget, at the same time, I'm, I'm still uncomfortable that as a HPC, we're supposed to look at these windows as best we can. Windows are always a problem. And the divided lights is a historical part of this building. And for me to say as a commissioner, well, we're not going to do that because of budget, that sort of puts me in conflict with the guidelines for HPC.
Understood. Um, just to clarify for Commissioner Rose, um, I, I was saying that I would like some clarification on what sort of information the commission is looking for. Um, so if we can provide perhaps alternative windows that have divided lights, or if we can provide windows that have internal divided lights or, um, kind of, I guess, you, when, when you ask for, um, more information on what it would take to like, are you strictly looking at rehabil- rehabilitating the existing windows? Or replicating through, uh, modern windows that have divided lights?
Yeah, I was. Um, I think as we've been talking for, with, with the other applicant applicants, I think we're all interested in, in improving energy efficiency and, and trying to adapt our, our requirements, you know, to allow for that. Um, but I think what I would like to see if we, and I'm not sure what the proper language is for, for a motion on this, but you know, to, to have the city come back to us or the applicant come back with alternatives, you know, within the budget, obviously if, if a budget is not in our purview, but maybe a different window manufacturer or different configurations or materials or something, um, might create a, a way to improve the character of what we have, or at least retain the character of some of the windows within the budget. And I think, I think we just, I would feel more comfortable knowing more about it and, and having the, the, the applicant look, look into it deeper and, and come back with some other or some expanded options, I guess, or an expanded option, just something that looks a little deeper other than just, you know, improving the energy efficiency and putting it in with the HVAC. You know, I mean, that's, I think there, there's a deeper thinking here because everyone in town, everyone who we're holding to these criteria i- is going to see it. I mean, that's part of the part of the visibility that we have.
So I have a slightly different take, I guess. I think that these windows are not historic, haven't been historic for decades. I think the proposal they've made for the Memorial Hall 10 windows ought to be approved. And then I think we ought to send them back to look at retaining the historic wood divided light windows and looking at ways to make them more efficient. And looking at ways to make them more efficient, perhaps with storm windows. That would be the motion I would make.
That would be the motion I would make.
Can I ask a question before we make the motion?
Let's see if we can get a second and then we can discuss, Joy.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um Anne made a motion. To do one.
We we approve the request to replace the ten Memorial Hall windows as proposed. And that we send the city back to look at ways that they could retain the historic. Wood divided light windows, but add some way to make them more energy efficient. So that they would have to come back to us with, I think probably not adding storm windows, wouldn't come back to us. But if there were any material change to those wood historic divided lights, they would have to come back with the new MCAC.
Okay, so I'm hearing uh really two motions, and the first motion is to. Uh approve the ten windows in Memorial Hall as proposed. And to the second motion is to deny the remaining windows in both offices. Both store rooms and the women's club in the kitchen.
Retable those?
Investigate, Joy, wait a minute, with direction that they investigate ways to make. Those spaces more energy efficient without replacing the windows.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate you spelling it out.
I have a comment about that, or do we, I mean, if we vote on that, then that's the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so I do have a comment on that.
No, you should.
Um so I like the idea of looking at the the other windows that are divided light and seeing if there's a way to keep them and make them more energy efficient. But having said that, I'm wondering if doing that might allow some extra money to. Give these windows some more character that is more in keeping with those windows. I guess, I guess that might be. That's sort of to me is part of the extra thinking on it, which I like the idea of. Keeping the old windows and improving energy efficiency, storm windows certainly would be. I'm get, I'm imagining would be less expensive than entire new windows. Um and it could even be interior. So um. I'm not sure if I can go with the whole thing.
To that, Matt, would be again, I think we need to keep in mind that these windows are not visible. To the primary public right away. So I think we have a lot more latitude for these ten windows. The others. Especially the kitchen windows are pretty visible. So I I would stick with my motion, but if we don't get a second, then we can keep discussing.
Well, I just have a comment about your motion, which I agree with um completely. And these windows have been. The same design for how many years? And if you try, I think it would look less appropriate to try to put in the false. Grids to match, which they won't, the original windows, and to just leave them as they are.
I I will um state, if you don't mind, that um the Secretary of the Interior does. Um speak about windows that aren't original to the property um. And that their character can become um integral to. A contributing resource itself, kind of like you've, like you were stating, um that. By altering that, we may be altering what would be considered part of City Hall's character. Um as it has been since potentially the nineteen sixties.
That was a really good point to make.
Motions failed for lack of a second, so I think we gotta keep going. Unless somebody second.
I'll second it. I think I think your point, Laura, made a good one, so um I'll go along.
And could you repeat the? What we're voting on?
So uh there are two motions, um I believe. Uh the first is. Uh in favor of approving the Memorial Hall ten windows as presented. And the second motion is uh to deny the other windows with the direction that they. Only come back once they've fully investigated other. Uh weatherproofing and energy efficiency upgrades that don't involve uh removing the historic windows. So uh perhaps we could do a, oh Fred has Fred has his hand up. Let's hear what he has to say first.
Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Uh thank you. For the record, Fred Roland Hagan, Planning Director, I think what I would recommend is that be one motion. Um it's it's kind of messy to have two motions um on the table. That's all one motion. In other words, you're approving one set of windows and you're denying another set of windows. That's include, make that one motion.
And I agree. Yeah, it is just one motion. It's one fell swoop of thought there.
I think I. I would like to clarify for the record then that a. Yeah, so let's let's vote um in the affirmative and then i- in opposition, right? Like there's.
Yeah, so so a vote in favor of the motion is just what's said. You're 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 approving some, you're approving. Sir, some windows and you're denying the other windows, but if you, if you're voting no on the motion, that means you're you're not. You're 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 not voting on that motion, and if you have a majority, then that motion will will. Will be defeated, and then somebody needs to make another motion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just a condition, isn't it? So we have a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. I said aye.
Okay, um approved five zero. I do have a question about that, um this energy efficiency project. Is that um something you're receiving grant money for, and are there certain guidelines that you need to follow?
I I'm not entirely sure. Maybe, I'm not sure, um maybe Fred might have some insight. No.
I know how these work, though.
And I do too. It's it's basically a project where Snyder Electric has come in. And is proposing certain actions that will reduce energy costs.
Right.
And they get paid based on the savings.
Okay.
That's pretty much what it is, and it's very extensive. It's, we've, like you've said, we've seen bits and pieces of it, but it's a very extensive project.
Right, so it's not just this building, it's other city facilities as well. Um and typically, there are some funds from like the Colorado Energy Office that uh accompany it. Uh but it's not fully grant funded, it's funded out of the um, it's basically. Making payments against our future savings, so.
And it was presented to council a while ago, I think.
Okay, thanks. Let's see, I thought I had another. Question about that, um. Well, I guess we can move on to other business, and I I already closed the hearing, okay. Okay, so um for other business, were we gonna just give kind of an update on Title seventeen?
Yes, I can do that.
It's, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. I I appreciate it and thank, and I'm 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 grateful for the opportunity to zoom in like this. I I appreciate everybody's patience. I would have been there, but I had some, I have some personal matters to take care of this evening, so I appreciate you. Or I appreciate being able to zoom in and talk talk about this. Um I wanted, yeah, I wanted to provide a quick update about uh Title seventeen updates. Um I think it was last. Uh last month where um I said that I was gonna look and see if we could find some funding or some money or something like that. Or see what we had available um um to help us out with uh with Title seventeen revisions. Um since then, I realized um there is no money. We don't. I don't have uh a- any any funding right now for for this particular project. Um we're we're trying to uh keep keep our belts tightened um at least to the end of the year. Um so we know what what may or may not happen with um uh the ballot initiative. And then also how that might reflect uh you know, every but every department's budget for next year. But in um but for now, we we really don't have any funding um available to us, so. Um Lo- uh Laura and I uh break uh uh talked on the phone real quickly and did a little bit of brainstorming and and thought. Well, listen, if we're very interested, if we're interested in um finding funny funding to get some uh uh professional help. To help us out with these um amendments, uh what grant opportunities are out there? And you know, there there's lots of grant um uh money available from from uh History Colorado. And they do have a CLG or a Certified Local Government General Grant Program. Um and so I uh reached out to our representative at History Colorado and I'm. Um um I'm gonna be talking with them uh later on this week to find out. Possibility of getting that grant and what's involved and things like that. It does push the timeframe out for getting this project done. Um because with a CLG grant, the grant application is expected, I believe, gonna be available in October. Um but with applications due usually in January and then award notifications either at the end of February or beginning of March. So that pushes the timeline out a little bit, but um thi- this way we um hopefully will. Be able to get funding that um um that that we can use to to get some professional help on on Title seventeen. So that's the update right now that I have.
Thank you. Any comments from commissioners?
Oh, I think that's an appropriate approach, yeah, and I think stretching it out till early next year is not a problem.
I I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um the next thing we wanted to discuss is. Using social media. To um promote historic preservation and um. I think Fred, we did discuss that briefly, but um could you explain how that could work? We have, we have two computer experts here on the.
Yeah, um so ki- kind of. Kind of, kind of as an example, um actually, I've, we we've had the a similar discussion with the Housing Advisory Board on this. The Housing Advisory Board is has um long been been wanting to get the word out and get information out to. Uh residents about housing matters in a variety of different ways. Um and the the city has has um has a variety of social media accounts. Facebook is probably the 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 big one or the or or the most popular one as an example. And um in talking with our PIO, if any board or commission, or if I should say, if the HPC wants to. Um put something out on social media or get uh get some information or convey some information. That's what our accounts are for, and um if there is anybody on HPC who um. Is kind of a social media person or wants to wants to uh take on that task or or. Um um you know, identify tidbits of information that you want to convey over a period of time. We can put you in touch with our PIO and um she can make sure that any information that HPC wants to convey. Is is done in in appropriate manner and complies with with city policy and stuff like that. Um so so as as an example, um the Housing Advisory Board. I don't know if they've they've done that re- done this recently, but they periodically um uh pushed out. Uh pieces of information that they've wanted to convey to the public. They've worked with our PIO and getting that out. So that's that's available to the HPC.
And is it just Facebook?
Um there's a uh I there's a, I believe there's a couple s- couple other social media sites. I'm not exactly sure what they are. Um but but there are some other social media sites that I think we are on.
And if I could, Fred, they've also um in the past with the Pikes Peak Bulletin published articles. But that was separate from the city of Manitou and kind of on on their own, and I know the Pikes Peak Bulletin isn't an option, but. Um I'm sure that other newspapers would be more than willing.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great idea, and I think we ought to kind of brainstorm as to what kind of message. Cause it needs to be sort of succinct. We can't have like pages. But I think we could do things periodically every two or three months. To, for example, remind folks that they can't replace windows without coming in front of the HPC. Cause that's a big one. That happens a lot without that. So I, we used to do that via kind of postcards, but I think putting little blurbs on Facebook is a great idea.
Yeah, and little blurbs about how to restore, like how to restore windows. And actually, we could post resources for that, like preservation briefs. Those are so helpful. I mean, things like that, and what's going on, like successful projects that have been completed, like. Matt's house with the grant. That way we could, we could promote the grant as well, so. I think we have plenty of information to.
Yeah, I agree. I think that would be great. Um how do we go about making a plan like that? Cause that involves, you know, we should talk about it, you know, sort of maybe lay out. Six messages that we want to get out and plan it. You know, probably don't have time tonight to work on that, and we'll need some more thought, but um but how do we do that? I mean, cause we're not gonna meet again officially in for a month. Do we have a in in interim session? Talk about it, cause I think I think we need to bring some ideas in and then have a conversation about it.
We could each send Laura, cause we don't want to do this to ea- to everybody, but. We could each send Laura suggestions on what we think would be suitable topics. And that, as you said, Matt, maybe like six topics, cause we don't want to overwhelm people. Eventually, they'll quit looking. But if we did one every couple months, I think that could be very useful. So why don't we all just email Laura with a couple suggestions?
And then Laura, you send everything back to us first. And and we vote.
It could be an agenda item and we could.
So.
So next time will be October. Do you think that's, yeah.
I think that was October eighth was the next.
Already sorted. October first is our next meeting. Uh I would request that staff receive the doc, uh the the list. By September twenty second.
Okay.
Uh it's, yeah, I think that that would be, that would be fine if uh folks want to email. Your ideas to staff, and then that way, if there's any sort of research that we need to do prior. Um not including the the actual writing, of course, but um that'll be.
I'm gonna be out of town, actually out of the country, September sixteenth through the twenty fourth, so I. I don't know.
Email Matt?
Maybe do that.
September twenty second, email six suggestions to Chelsea.
That's a good, yeah.
So we're emailing them to Chelsea? Okay.
Sounds good. Um, there's one other thing I've received um email. Did everyone get the email from Kristen? About doing another training. She wants to do another training for, it's called Effective Meetings. And that sounds like a good, a good topic.
Kristen from the city clerk?
Yeah, she did the training on. Yeah, so. Maybe the November meeting, because our October meeting, I think, is pretty full with with um. Hiawatha Gardens and. Social media, so, yeah. So maybe should I let her know? November would be good for that. Okay. Okay, any more? Comments? We can adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-five.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Fred, Chelsea. Everybody.